I am calling to order the special meeting of the Police Commission today, Monday, November 21st at 5:04 PM. Let us start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands as the foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is correspondence. Commissioner, if you could read our correspondence.
November 21st, 2022, summary letters received from residents to the police department. Subject: This resident wanted to thank the police department for hosting the senior citizens picnic. It was very missed during the pandemic and much appreciated. Next, received from resident regarding Officer Cushman. Subject: This family wanted to thank Officer Cushman for all the time and effort that was put into the junior police academy. Their child had a blast. It was a highlight of their summer. Next, received from resident regarding Officer Hall. Subject: A resident had an emergency and their daughter wanted to commend Officer Hall on his assistance, care, and comfort in follow-up call. It was all very reassuring to the resident and her daughter. That is all.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes for October 12th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Thoughts, comments, concerns? All right. In that case, all in favor of approving the minutes of the October 12th, 2022 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item on our agenda is the chairperson's report. On October 27th, I ran into a resident outside of, at the Cracker Barrel, at a restaurant, and they stopped me to tell me how excited they were, oh, to see the dog. He was saying that he saw the dog outside of town hall, talking to a mom and a group of kids, and it was just awesome, a community building, and he really wanted to let us know that it was such a nice thing to see. So, that was October 27th. On November 3rd, the Intermodal House hosted a fundraiser breakfast where they were thanking the police for their work, all of the police departments for their work that they do for domestic violence, and Tanisha and I attended. And the chief and several members of the department were there, but the chief was interviewed. He got a very nice plaque, and he was very eloquent and well-spoken in the news. So, well done.
Thank you.
On, I have a note to myself to verify with you. November 28th, the Police Commission needs to complete its memo for the tri board. So, on November 28th, we need to submit our memo regarding our budget priorities for the tri board meeting. And last but not least, on January 9th, we will have our meeting with the Board of Selectmen where we discuss our budget.
Why don't you just give this?
We did. Time flies, and we're having fun.
Okay, so I'm not going crazy?
No, it's once a year, and so this, this time they are suggesting January 9th because that is before the Board of Selectmen's meeting and before ours, so everyone should be available to be able to get together. And that concludes my report. I will turn it over to the chief.
Thank you. So, for personnel, we continue to have staffing challenges. Of the 41 authorized sworn members, we only have 36 sworn available for fully deassignment right now. So, three officers who are on medical leave, one officer is in the academy, and we're still trying to fill our vacancies. Dispatch center is still short one dispatcher, and we're also trying to fill that. For recent or upcoming events, as the chairperson discussed, we went to the Breakfast with Champions on November 3rd, and the Intermodal House basically considers this a salute to law enforcement for the partnership of the 24 towns in our region working together to prevent domestic violence and provide swift response to those community services. The senior center hosted a fashion show to support the mission of Fabhar. Each person achieved their personal best. Several members of the department escorted models, purchased items from the Fabhar thrift shop. It was an awareness event, which was a very fun event. The department hosted a car seat clinic on Saturday, October 29th, at the Wheaton Firehouse, and we appreciate the everlasting support of the fire department for always willing to help us out when we can and to open up the firehouse to us. And then the department had a presence at the annual tariff Halloween event on October 14th. Quick update on motor vehicle thefts throughout town. We've had a total now of 11 car thefts this calendar year, so last month we were at 49. We've had two more since then. Same thing with catalytic converter thefts. We had two in the month of November so far. We were fortunate not to have any in October. We're up to 41 reported catalytic converter thefts since August of 2021. So, both of those areas still seem to be diminishing compared to how they were a year, two years, and three years ago for the car thefts, but still a trouble number four.
And chief, I saw that out of those, on our report, it was nine. Car thefts now up to 11, and four of those have been at a dealership.
Correct.
So, with the additional two on top of the nine, is that, were they from a dealership or were they individual residents?
Individual residents.
Yeah.
Keys left in the car, cars unlocked.
Okay.
Southern part of town.
Yeah.
Fair enough. And that's all I have for my report.
Hi. Sorry, I'm gonna be doing that all night. I apologize. Then moving on to the consolidated monthly report for September. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Chief, I saw the larceny number was, was climbing on us. Is that, is there anything there?
No, I mean, they, they come and go. So, so that is, you know, not the car thefts, but that is any group of larcenies from shoplifting to an item being taken from outside of your home to, you know, a device being left at the school and then it went missing. But that, that's not sort of out of the ordinary. It is our number one reported crime.
Yeah.
It has been for many, many years.
Yeah. Just seeing there was a, there was a spike here for, for the past quarter, I guess, and I was sure there was something there. You feel like things are changing?
No, it does, it does, definitely.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question that's not necessarily related. Is there a fine for people that keep having bears come in their house because they don't close their doors? Like, is there, is there some sort of civil penalty or any sort of anything? So, if I leave my garage door open and I keep inviting the bears in and they're just tearing up my house week after week, and I call you guys out and you scare with it?
Yeah.
I'm just doing my thing, and there's no recourse for me other than whatever the bears have done.
No, I would say, given that scenario, it's sort of hard to fit that into our wildlife nuisance ordinance, but depending on the specific circumstances potentially. The ordinance says you can intentionally feed the wildlife. If you are regularly leaving your door open and you have trash in there, it's happening time and time again, maybe that's something to look at, but.
Just curious. And I had another little, like, ridiculous question. So, we have the car, K9, in our mileage that's the ACO car?
Yes.
How are we gonna distinguish when we have the K9 car?
We've actually looked at revamping this now for the last couple of years, like, to try to figure out how to make it more usable for us in numbers that, you know, may not be prevalent, that you're looking for the information that you're looking for. It works for us, but we can add that on here. Usually what's on here is, are the cars that get significantly more miles. So, the community services car is not one that is out there putting on anywhere near the control miles.
Okay.
Where the animal control officer vehicle, the car K9 here, does generate more than our administrative vehicles, but not as much as the control miles.
Okay.
Chief, I'm noticing the overtime hours are trending down. Is that, is that a true statement, or do you, has there been some sort of, you know, we figured out something that was not a fast practice?
We, we have not. I don't know if it's trending down. I know that we are not where we should be if you're looking at percentages.
Yeah.
For overtime. So, currently, you know, 42%, where we should be around 33%. So, I don't see it, I don't see it trending down. Last year was a really heavy year in overtime.
Yeah.
So, in comparing the two, we are, we're still pretty close to it because we were at around 50% towards the end of November last year as well.
Yeah, and I know we were extremely high, and, and it's going to be a budget priority this coming year as well.
Yeah.
It just, I, when I looked at some hours here, it looked like they were decreased from the same area, maybe just because we hit the high watermark last year.
It could have been, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so it's, under the personnel activity, it can be, I don't wanna say a little bit misleading.
Disleading.
But for every overtime hour that, that is, you know, patrol or even training, regular overtime hour, that's not any overtime for a construction job or something like that. The officers have the option of taking money for that job or compensatory time. And so, that fluctuates. So, the hours here may, may show less, but there may be more people who are choosing to take cash or money for their overtime as opposed to compensatory time.
So, the status by itself is not really that telling?
No, right. In and of itself, it's not, no.
Okay.
Okay, what about the preliminary, preliminary monthly activity report for October? Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I'm gonna circle everything, so I don't tell anyone.
There's nothing on here about October, so I can tell which month it was, though. Otherwise. Okay. Then, moving on to new business, the fiscal year 2024 budget discussion. I will turn that over to the chief. I think we all got, um, the draft. Does everyone have their draft? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You got it?
Great. So, sort of a few areas that you would like to focus on for the next budget year. So, what this does not include right off the bat is all those sort of small increases or decreases depending on what we may need. So, if we, for instance, you know, need cruiser equipment such as lockout tools, traffic cones and things like that, that varies throughout the year, and next year may be a year where we need a little bit more or a little bit less. So, some of the numbers are gonna fluctuate here and there. These are sort of like larger priorities. And so, one that we have historically been working on is staffing. And so, the last year, we asked for five officers and an accreditation specialist, and so we received two, and that accreditation specialist. So, I think we still should move forward, looking for those three additional officers right now, even though we have a staffing and workload study that is in the process. Do we see the need for this? We decided last year to make sure that we identify, you know, where those positions should go, because I think it attaches a little bit more meaning to just asking for individual officers. So, for this coming year, we've had communications now for well over a year with the school superintendent about putting an additional school resource officer in the system. Currently, we have one assigned to the high school, we have one assigned to the middle school, and that officer assigned to the middle school then has a responsibility of the elementary schools as well. So, we see a need or a benefit of having a third SRO now assigned to the middle, uh, the elementary schools and going in between each shift. We have been staffing that position now at the high school and the middle school, regardless of whether the officer is on a vacation day, a sick day, a training day. We've been trying to get an officer to fill that. So, in order to do that, this third will help out with that as well at the high school and the middle school, where we see a larger need, a larger call, uh, call service volume. So, one would be a, a third school resource officer. The second one would be an additional traffic officer. So, we implemented or re-implemented the traffic officer this May, 2022, and the home base hours are basically during the daytime hours. And there's definitely a need for more traffic enforcement during the evening hours, so we're looking to implement that with another body. And the third one is an additional sergeant, looking at the evening hours. So, right now, we have a good amount of additional support during the daytime if we need it. We have detectives, we have community services officers, we have administrative staff, we have SROs. During the evening shift, it goes down, but it's basically just the patrol officers. So, instead of just throwing an extra body into that mix, I think we have a pretty good solution here to take care of a lot of other things. One is a permanent dispatch supervisor who is able to actually get into the mix of things up in dispatch if it becomes really busy and that person's not needed out outside of the building, they can actually help out in dispatch. The second is administrative reviews. We have a lot of administrative work that can be done during the evening hours, such as reviews of a lot of different reports and things that would be assigned by the deputy chief, the lieutenants, or me. And then sort of coordinate that with filling in for supervisor overtime on that evening shift. So, you may recall, a few years ago, we, we dabbled with having a third sergeant, it was like 2017, we had a third sergeant working during the day, and they were filled in on a schedule that allowed for if one sergeant was out, we still had two scheduled. So, if one was out for training and then one called out sick or took a vacation day, we still had a sergeant there. It saved us a good amount of, of overtime on, for supervisors, but also kept our patrol numbers up to a reasonable number. And as it is, we have such a small number of supervisors for, to fill that patrol function. So, there's six right now assigned. So, if we have the one out on, say, medical leave and then one is at training, it brings us down to four sergeants really available to cover all of those shifts, and it becomes very taxing on them. So, here will be an additional supervisor who will be available in that pool for supervision. And then that, then obviously, that sergeant would be able to support patrol functions. So, if an incident did happen, we have now another body here available to go out and assist with patrol. And then also sort of inside responsibilities. So, you know, we have, I forget what the number was, we pulled it up recently, the number of times that we have, you know, a prisoner processed here, the number of times somebody is held in our cell, that sergeant can oversee that function. They can support the officer who is booking the person, and they could supervise the regular, you know, care and custody of that person. So, there's a lot of things that that additional supervisor in-house could do. So, those are the three areas that we're looking to put the three additional people, sworn members. And then in addition to that, you know, we've really seen an increased need for police clerk hours specifically in records. So, you may recall, we had a part-time records person or position that we lost in 2015. So, we had two part-time positions. In 2015, a person retired and we basically lost that position through attrition. And that was an additional 17 and a half hours. That person who was doing fingerprints during the day, which kept the officers out on the street, they were doing a lot of records work inside. So, the thought is, we hire a full-time police clerk, it's a civilian position, they can do a lot of the records work that is really demanding right now. We've seen the increase in pistol permits, all sorts of things over the last three years that's just taxing that department significantly. They can do fingerprint service. We're looking to do a scanning project that we've been talking with the IT department about in the town manager's office for the last year, making a lot of our documents electronic if we're running out of storage space. So, there's some significant retention issues that we have, we're running out of space. And, you know, if you look at one pistol permit application alone, it's a folder that's, you know, probably about, about that thick, it's about an inch and a half thick. And we had 300 some odd, some odd applications two years ago. Those have to go somewhere for six years. So, this person can work on scanning those and getting rid of the hard copies and then creating a management process going forward to potentially eliminate, you know, not just, we don't wanna, we don't wanna create paperwork we don't have to, but eliminate it and then, you know, provide for more storage. It's not just pistol permits, it's all more, yeah, so it's across the board, all sorts of things. And then we have found that, well, for the last 15 years, one of the things that really bogs down the training and administrative sergeant is the paperwork, is data entry. So, the officers go to training, that doc, that has to be documented, has to be inputted into our system, and that starts to pile up. So, that police clerk position would help out with that as well, data entry for that person. And that's.
Question, the accreditation specialist, are they, is she helping with any of the administrative functions, or is she strictly focused on accreditation?
So, wrapped into the accreditation is policy procedure upgrades. So, she, she is helping with that, and that's a significant bunch. So, when an accreditation standard either changes or is brought, is brought forward, then she will be looking at, how do we change our operating procedure? Do we need to, our policy, do we need to, what else do we need to do for that? So, she's doing much more than just showing, you know, proof through.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And so, that position's already, you know, has been filled.
Capped out.
Underway, and she's doing.
Yeah.
And capped out. You're absolutely right. Because right now, we have two people working on that. So, Tracy Dunn has still been in that position while she's been on a modified assignment. She's been, she's been doing that, and we're starting to make a little headway with two people working on that, but that will end pretty soon. So, that's, that's the plan from our standpoint on staffing, and hopefully, you know, we'll see some, some good information coming back from that workload and staffing study.
Have you gotten any feedback from them on the timeline, how it's going?
No, the, the hangup is with us right now. I'm providing all the information to them, and we had one officer working on it, and he, you know, really went through it pretty quickly, and now we're in the process of fine-tuning it, checking it for accuracy, and then getting that information. The second area is our overtime. So unfortunate, it seems like every year, even though our numbers go up, you know, over a long period of time, for personnel, the overtime just seems to decline as well. You know, I feel that we are extremely responsible in the management of that overtime, but the bulk of it still ends up being as a result of leave, sick leave, injury leave, vacation leave, having to fill the patrol shifts. That's really where most of that overtime comes from. Last year was significantly high, we went $86,000 over budget, and we would have some left over in our training budget to help compensate that, but most of it came from our lack of personnel. So, we had vacant shifts or vacant positions last year, so that was huge. I'm hoping that we have a better grasp on that this year, a grasp meaning sort of out of our control. Hopefully, we'll have healthier members and want less use of, of sick leave or injury leave.
Have we seen anything about mandatory? Are we still trending towards mandatory overtime more than people opt in?
So, anecdotally, I have not heard the, sort of the complaint that we did here before that people were being forced to work overtime if they didn't want to. Haven't really been hearing that, but we'll see what.
That's good.
It is good. Yeah, that is good.
Vehicles.
Yeah, next, next topic will be the vehicles, you know, three marked police cruisers and then two administrative vehicles. So, in the last couple of years, we put together a, it's basically a six-year plan for our administrative vehicles to use those. That six-year plan in reality is more of a six-year plan for some, seven years for some, eight years for some, I think. We have one car now that may potentially be close to nine years. But in order to try to keep that somewhat six-year plan, every few years, that's be a purchase of two additional vehicles instead of one, and that has been in our, our plan now, in the six-year CNR tentative plan. So, it should not be new to the Board of Selectmen on that Russell.
The current vehicles, are the large vehicles being used yet?
So, one is now being used finally. The second one is at the vendor, becoming outdated. They sat for a long time. The vendor said that it was parts that they couldn't get, and then it was just the massive flow of work that they had. So, we're getting closer. Getting closer. One's on the road, the second one should be soon. And then we have some one-time operating purchases that we're looking at, and one is software to help us be more efficient and productive with our scheduling and our managing of leave. So, right now, everything is by paper, and if an officer was looking for, say, a day off, they fill out a card. If they're not working, they have to call in, get ahold of the dispatcher or the supervisor. So, there are systems out there that other police departments are using that are accessible by way of phone or the computer. You can see, you know, if there's room for somebody to take off from patrol, they could be a guideline to how many officers can take off per shift. You can see that all, it's accessible, you can request leave, you can sign up for overtime, and so it'll reduce the number of calls in dispatch. It will allow the officers to see in real time, you know, what the status is of a shift or approval of a day off, they don't have to call or get into that. So, I think it's a real handy tool for us, and it also then allows us to run reports. So, right now, our scheduling is all done by way of Excel sheets, spreadsheets. You can't generate a report from that, and this will allow us to generate reports on number of leave by officer name, by shift, all sorts of things. So, there benefits one, yeah, that tool. Ah-ha.
Good man.
Is that all right?
Thank you.
And it goes through four different doors here. I'm sorry. Okay. Mind if I walk right in front of your camera?
You'll be careful.
Okay.
Chief, you just reminded me that, oh, accreditation organization, are they sharing best practices across forces?
COEIA, the accreditation?
Yeah. Are they sharing best practices, like, hey, they're seeing it in Simsbury, and that pertains to Chicago, or vice versa? You know, I mean, you're, you're obviously figuring out that we can use some better software.
So, as far as I know, COEIA has never addressed the scheduling aspect like that. I know it became fairly popular about 10, 12 years ago, and they were really like big ticket items, like 50, $60,000, 90s. They've come down significantly. But I would say, I would say the, the commission for accreditation has not offered those best practices or scheduling that, but certainly for a lot of other things. has not offered those best practices for scheduling better, but certainly for a lot of other things.
Would you foresee the scheduling software lessening the workload? That so that one of, that we can pick up on some of the data entry or something? Like will it create efficiencies so that other backloads could be addressed?
No, not, not really. It will create efficiencies and it'll be less phone calls that people are receiving, less, you know, people walking down to look at the overtime board to see what's there. As far as positions, no, I think we have some experience with, you know, s- No, it'll make Gen's life a lot easier. And, you know, it can, you know, help streamline things. Maybe cut down some, some errors. There's, you know, some human errors. Make things a lot easier to decipher, a lot easier and quicker to be able to, to see like, if I have a question, I need to get ahold of an officer. I don't know when he's working. Now I have to, you know, call off to dispatch, hey, when is Officer, you know, Smith working the next or whatever? And then whereas this, you can just go online and hope their schedule. You have everything right there in front of you. You see, see when their, their schedule is, when their, their time off is and things like that. So it just makes it a lot easier and more efficient. But I don't know if there's a, Chief, I don't know if there's a, this area.
So it's not something like, oh, well, you're not going to need a police clerk because they can do the software?
I mean, they do have certain systems that also build in, like billing for, for private duty work and things like that. So that would help streamline and, and cut the workload for Gen substantially. Instead of sending, you know, individual bills out to companies or whatever. You can do it, yeah, almost.
It's like we should be able to. So what are you, are you currently using for, to check of your time? Oh, no, ser- seriously?
Yeah, so we have, we have, we have individual cards and we have thousands and thousands of cards.
Spreadsheets.
We have to retain those for many years, spreadsheets and-
Oh, I thought you meant that was in addition to. Okay.
Yeah, it, I mean, it really is an antiquated way and, and we've, you've seen the need now for a little bit anyways. I think it'll be useful. And so the second one-time operating purchase would be less lethal launchers. So we currently have a tool that we use. It's a less lethal weapon. It will fire a sock round. So it's designed to stun somebody. It's not designed to cause any lethal damage. So it's used only in a really small set of circumstances. What many departments did over the years was they converted shotguns to be used for this. We did the same thing. And we tried to identify those shotguns as less lethal weapons and not lethal weapons by painting them a certain color. I think there's a better way to do that. There is a, a less lethal launcher that's designed for this purpose only and will not shoot anything else. It will not shoot a lethal round. It's immediately identifiable by other officers, whether you're in this town or another town assisting, has a less lethal weapon that only will shoot a sock round. It's a much smaller weapon. Our current shotguns are no longer being produced. So, and they are very old. They're very simplistic, but they're very old. So we're looking to replace our current system with a newer system.
How many weapons would that be, any launchers?
So I think we're looking at like eight to ten of those. And then the last category here in the operating-
So I'm sorry, would you still have, would you still have a lethal shotgun capability?
No, not shotgun.
Yeah.
We have patrol rifles.
Yeah. And that's the largest caliber weapon you have?
It is.
Yeah.
And what other, you said it was a couple instances where those would be used or which, what are those?
So those would be used, for instance, if someone is a, you know, a very safe distance away from others and they are trying to harm themselves, maybe with a, you know, with a knife or something. And, you know, it's, it would not be reasonable to use lethal force on them. But you have to take some sort of action to prevent them from harming themselves. Can't get closer or prevent them from harming somebody else, you would consider using that. They are also used for hazing bears. So if a bear is trying to get into a chicken coop or a rabbit coop, then they have been used to shoot at bears and they just stun them and they run away and they're trying, they're trying to learn not to come back. You know, that learned behavior. I don't know if they're really that successful. Because when it has been used, they scooted for a little bit and then turned around and just went back.
Does it require new training or additional training for these weapons?
Just an adjustment to that different style. It opens differently. The round gets put in very differently, but there's no significant training aspect to it. Just a very simplistic training. Any other questions about, about those? And then the last category in that section is a paid internship. So we have had interns in the past and it's never been a paid position. And just trying to think down the line for a potential recruitment opportunity because it seems to be very difficult for us. It's catching up to us. So the other departments around our region, Connecticut and the nation, have had a very difficult time the last couple of years with recruitment. We weren't really seeing that, but it, it has hit us now. So we're just sort of trying to toss the idea around about, you know, would there be an advantage? Would we, would that benefit us by having a paid internship? Would we be looking at a, a much more competitive process for somebody who wants to be here toward the end of their college career to then transition and work here for us? I'm not sure how feasible it is because the internship program that we have here has been predominantly ride-alongs in figuring out the function of, of what police do. And we would be looking to pay somebody to do actual work besides, besides that, so. It's in the making.
Have our internships ever like been for credit, like class credit?
Yeah, oh yeah, most of them are.
Okay. So they are getting something out, like a benefit, other than just the joy of being here?
Yes, oh definitely, yeah. And to, you know, to the sort of the credit of the program, we did have the one person who went through as an intern, came to dispatches here, then became a police officer here. And then she relocated to a different part of the country. But otherwise, we've, we've done internship, internships every single year from various schools. But they've never moved into somebody working here. We have had a few, a few interns that have gone elsewhere. And then sort of on our capital number recurring, the animal control officer vehicle is about nine years old now. That has been on our six-year CNR plan as well for a few years. So we're looking at a new vehicle. And then taser replacement. So our tasers have gone past their life expectancy. They don't make that model or version any longer. So we're looking to replace those. We've had to replace some of them individually because they've broken. And there is a, a brand-new model out and a brand-new model for funding that, or should, I should say financing that. It's very much like the cameras now, where you are paying for a program each year. So instead of paying the initial, say, hundred thousand dollars to replenish these, every year you're paying a certain amount of that, roughly a quarter of that. And you're paying for the warranty on that, upgrades within a certain amount of time. Anything happens to it, it gets replaced and things like that. So the model of purchasing has changed as well.
So basically, you're, you're paying for a service, a service involved, yeah.
And that has been in the six-year plan now for, I believe, two years. And it's roughly around twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars a year.
Just gonna pretend that's not happening. Any other questions on that?
Are there any items that you wish to think about or wishes or want for us to add on our radar that they necessarily put here?
I don't think anything that's sort of outside of that, you know, small five or 10% fluctuation that may happen. You know, so for some, you know, some years we have to, you know, buy additional equipment for evidence processing, some years we don't. Just like, you know, cruiser equipment sometimes. It's sort of where we are right now, but there may be something. You know, and we may be looking at other sources of funding for that.
Well, I'm not a budget priority. When it comes to explain whatever we want with the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, I would recommend mentioning our facility study. And it's not, and it's still in the works, but I think we should comment on that to let them know that taking on the six-year CNR thing and so forth.
Well, and I, I think it directly relates to this. We look at the requested staffing. The police clerk really has no place to go if we're gonna hire another person. We'll have to look at either desk sharing, alternate hours, sort of non-conventional or traditional desk or office because we have no place for that person. Administrative sergeant, we would have to put that sergeant in with the patrol sergeants right now. That max is out of that office space. The police clerk also, you know, directly relates to this because we're running out of space to put our files that we have to retain. So this is a move to try to help get us through a little bit.
That could be candid fodder for other people, of course. Well, the answer to that is you don't hire any more people.
Yep.
Same money, two different directions. I have a question that I made earlier.
Of course.
I think it's Army, one of those towns, south of us, have a sort of auxiliary unit or something with traffic control events. I forget what they call it, I think it's-
Fire police?
I've had, when I had a grandson who liked to ride bicycles and sail across. And he'd pick up a lot of land and roads and stuff. And it was a big red town, I'm sorry I can't remember which one it was. But they had at least ten folks on duty that day that had some sort of a recognizable outfit. You know, it wasn't a police uniform, but it was something that distinguished them from other folks. And they did a lot in traffic control because there were a lot of people on their vehicles at the time. And so which then frees up presumably uniformed officers to do their job and not be converted to traffic control for six hours. You ever hear about that kind of stuff or does it make any sense?
Well, I would be interested to figure out like, what's that venue of? Like what is it, is it for a traffic accident or is it for a concert or?
In that case, it was for a bicycle race.
Race?
Yeah, but it crossed, you know, through fields and up and down hills and down the road and around the corner and back on the road.
I'm familiar with the cycle.
Back off the road. So it crosses a bunch of roads, but it also generates a lot of traffic.
Well, it does that similar to what Hartford has, like the Rangers?
The cadets or?
No, they have Rangers.
Rangers along the river from- You're talking more about the auxiliary, though. Actually, sorry, auxiliary, auxiliary, Groton used to have a program. They don't have it anymore. Not many departments do it, there's a few, I think Enfield has one. We did have one. Groton.
Wait, Bill? I'm thinking about last year, this one.
And maybe, I mean, and I'm not sure, but a lot of them have gone down just because they just haven't been able to, it's, it relies upon, you know, volunteers or, you know, and they do help out with like, if there's concerts or help supplement different things. But it's hard to find and train, you know, train people and keep a, keep the program up and running per se. A lot of, I mean, a lot of towns that have had them, they no longer do. But, you know, it's, yeah, that's separate than from the Rangers. I'll have a riverfront over there now, whatever it is.
I think, I think our last one was probably around two thousand two or two thousand three. We had auxiliary that would help out for, for concerts or for large events like that. They were not police officers, but they did very, very similarly perform.
Yeah.
There'll be an example of that in Hartford in three weeks, actually. Nashville, I'm not totally familiar with how these bicycle things work, but Nashville, whatever it is, is having their Nashville finals tournament, whatever, at Riverside Park in Hartford on the eleventh of December. They've ordered for property and I don't know what kind of roads around there, but also here's. But they're very interesting. They're a little like, but it's, there's people who participate and are really passionately about it. And those things go from like eight in the morning, so four in the afternoon. But one, you know, all kinds of age, fourteen, sixteen, boys, girls, women, children, all people. All kinds of different groups. It just goes separately, it just be happening all day long. It seemed to work out pretty well in terms of finding a place to park it. And being trapped and under control when the streets are, you know, closed.
I think it would be similar to their SERC team, even though it's not a emergency response. Some, some towns have SERC teams, but I think it's more used for emergencies. It's a group of volunteers who've been trained to help with, you know, an actual disaster and things like that, not the technical aspects, but, you know, the periphery stuff that you can do.
Do we have a lot of functions where we would be able to utilize something like that? All I can think of is like the Meadows.
Well, I mean, the only issue there would be, I think there's a huge benefit to having services of police officers there, medical training. Technically stop traffic and do things that maybe somebody who's sponsored or like can do. I think they run in conjunction, they don't replace, they, what you said, they can't replace an officer, but they do supplement, they, you know, it's a supplemental resource to be able to utilize. Like I said, there are a lot of towns that have kind of gone away from it, just, you know, I don't know. Just not being able to find the people who are not to do it. I said, that's why I started when I was seventeen, eighteen years old, you know, doing that. You know, just doing traffic control.
Have we, um, any, um, or have we had any thoughts about utilizing our police officers for this construction? Every time I drive past, I'm going into Hartford, I hear this, boom, go to K and I was, you know, over there, kind of bad with police. But it's Tierville Road to Elm Street and then that's where they're doing the work, like over that area.
And you've seen the other officers there?
Yeah, these different towns that are-
Yeah, so what, so what-
Serving this spot right here.
Yeah, so what happens is if the project is in Simsbury, which right there it is, most of that is. Yeah, so what happens is if the project is in Simsbury, which right there it is, most of that is, it gets offered to our police officers first. And if our police officers don't want to work it, it then will go up to other towns.
They're private duty jobs?
It's a private duty job, so that's funded by that construction company. Doesn't come out of our budget.
Right, so it's a private duty job, what, so is that police department getting paid? Well, we'll assume that that will be money that will generate for that police department since that's their vehicle that's being used and none of our officers will.
Yeah, however they bill. So what happens is if, if we can't fill that job, then say if Bloomfield picks it up, then Bloomfield is now responsible for billing that department however they bill.
Thank you, brought it up, because the clouds over around this bridge down here on Meadow Street. Like that's absolutely ridiculous. Stop the traffic, you know, through West Street Pike, you know. Well, I said everything, they were not officers of any kind.
No, and they haven't, they haven't used us for a long time on that project. It was just the initial, the initial part of that project they used us.
And today, it's altered.
Well, pull it back to our budget. Um, what do you all think of the priorities? Are these the priorities we want to go forward with? What are your thoughts?
I think they're pretty consistent, we've been talking about for the last couple of years, so yes, I think they, especially the staffing. It should still be a number one priority going forward to the Board of Selectmen. Overtime is a constant problem and everything else is just kind of vehicles, you need vehicles. The replacement of equipment, you need that. Improvement with the software that's much less costly than it was many years ago. It all makes sense, but I think, I think the way it's laid out with staffing as a number one priority, we need to continue it.
When are we gonna get, when are we gonna get confronted with the fact that we don't have the study, the right science study available yet? So we wait to get that.
I would expect that to be pretty immediate.
The response, the, the study results?
No, I think that response from the Board and from everybody is going to say, well, why do we need to do anything? Let's just push, kick the can down the curve until we get this study. Um, we still have projected retirements and attrition for 2024, 2024 fiscal year, 24, correct?
Yeah, it's actually July of '23, it's going to start, so it's seven months away.
I feel like.
The next budget we're talking about.
Even if we don't have a response to the study, there's still built-in attrition. If maybe if the study comes back and says you didn't need these, you're okay.
Even if we started training an officer today, we wouldn't have him for seven months. Correct. Yeah, we still have one vacancy right now. We have had the authorization to fill that as of July 1. It started actually before July 1 and we have not been able to fill one of those positions. So it very well could be a significant challenge to get, to get people in here. There are three, July and August, that are eligible with time on, 25 years. There are three or four that are eligible by age. So it's right around the corner.
Right, you're right, that's something we should be able to say after we need to prepare for that. Does anyone give you indications that they're gonna fail?
Yes, one person did. Nothing is, is carved in stone, but it was a semi-public announcement that one person was, was.
Got a, got a.
Was looking as they're, as they're approaching.
Is that good for us, that's a good. And that, right?
Yes.
Any thoughts on any of the other, any of the other items? And I think the civilian clerk is important. I understand it, I don't know what to put to person. But hypothetically, when they start scanning out that paperwork, they can just scan out a room as dead.
Scan the way into a room?
This will be your office once you get rid of all of this.
Yeah, we, we may have to look at, you know, sort of some shift work on that.
I agree with Terry, I see anything that I thought was superfluous.
Hey, Chief, certainly going back to Commissioner Grant's question, additional items here. How are we looking on communication across the force? Are we adequate staff with radios and communication systems? Are we, are we need to be right now? Yeah, we're, we're still working out some of the, the kinks. So right now they're working on a communication issue that they didn't project between one of the sites and the tower. So we're still doing okay, we're still doing the whole lot better than what we were, and there is a, there is a resolution now for that. So that connection to the tower is by way of, not a microwave, doesn't go air-to-air, it's by way of an actual cable line.
Landline?
Yeah, landline. So there is fiber being put in, so we're going to move over to the fiber and we're going to have a dedicated, it's not called a law enforcement line, but it's, it's a ninety, 9% dedicated line for mission-critical communication. And so that's gonna cost us an additional twenty-four hundred dollars a year. So I plan on putting that in the budget for the civil preparedness system, which is where we put our to-do maintenance budget for the radars. But as far as number of radars, we're, we're good. For each officer, new person that we've asked for, who did last year and will do again this year, there'll be a number there. That number will be what it'll cost to outfit that officer as well. And have included a radio for them, all their equipment, you know, for such. So with every approval of a new additional officer that comes, a new portable radio, a new TASER, your firearm, or your. Okay. I like, I like the Stephanie Burns, I mean, the Bud Brothers.
Well, in that case, I guess I move that we put together a memo based on these priorities. I'll bring together a draft and send it to you. Do I move that? Do I need to? All right, that's what I'm gonna do then. I'm moving it and I'm, I'm approving it and keep your eyes peeled.
Good.
All right. Um, the next item on our agenda is the commission meeting schedule. I did have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is, our first date is January 9. We are meeting with the Board of Selectmen on January 9 at 5:00. So do you all want to meet afterwards at 6:00? Do you want to meet on a different date?
I think we should make that after, yeah.
Okay, so then schedule it for 6:00 instead of 5:00?
Six.
Okay. Um, why are we meeting on a Wednesday in February? Is that a holiday and I just couldn't find it on my calendar? Okay, I just want, can you tell me what holiday it is?
President's, President's Day.
Okay, it just wasn't showing up to my calendar. That's all. No, I thought you were on the 22nd.
Well, that's the President's Day.
Oh, okay. That was, the, the thing was slow. I can't turn the wheel. And then my last question was, April 10 is the beginning of the school spring break. I know last time we had a couple commissioners out of town because of spring break. So do we want to accommodate for that or just we'll deal with it on the calendar?
I'd wait till.
Okay, that's fine. Just throwing it out there.
I think I'll be here.
Okay. All right, so then the only change is to make January 9 at 6:00 PM. All right, in that case, do I have a, a motion to approve the schedule with that one change?
So.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, meeting schedule passes. And that concludes all of our business, new, old and otherwise. Do I have any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Our meeting adjourns, our special meeting of the Police Commission on Monday, November 21st, 2022 at 6:04 PM.